Here. Uh, there we go. All right, welcome everyone to the October 7, 2014 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Call the meeting to order. Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Mayor Tabby.
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections, see the agenda. Mr. McNeil.
Mr. Mayor, we have two which we would like to propose under general discussion at Public Works. The first would be 10C3, which would be to authorize a closure of Second Avenue and three street rail crossings in the downtown area for track repairs. And 10C4 would be to authorize a section of Veriling Drive from County Road 69 to Taylor Street to remain in place.
Thank you. Anything else? Entertained motion to approve the agenda? Council Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Council Mokel?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four, consent business. Anything to remove or add from consent? Council Whiting?
It'd be, uh, 4C4.
Four.
I'm sorry, yeah, 4C4.
4C4 to remove? Council Lehman?
The, uh, 4F3, I've got an updated version on the table.
Correct.
Which clarifies that it's not the hauler's responsibility to replace the garbage bins, but the city's. The city owns it. So that, I'm okay with that staying on consent as modified.
Okay. Anything else?
Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And also just for clarification, 44 had omitted the Public Works Director as one of the job descriptions to be modified. That's correct in the, um, action, but, uh, just to have that, uh, included in the, in the motion.
All right. Would anyone have an issue with putting, uh, 10C3 and 4, the new ones that were added this evening, on consent?
Are we buying Veriling Drive then? So we're gonna have to reimburse the state for it?
All right, let's leave it off then.
Yeah.
10C3? On consent? Anyone have a problem with that?
Nothing.
Okay, so we'll put 10C3 on to consent. Mr. McNeil. Council Lehman?
10F2.
That one cannot go on consent.
Okay. And the mural.
Onto consent?
Yep.
10F1? You okay with that?
Yeah, it'd be great.
Okay. 10F1 onto consent as well. All right, so we're adding 10C3 and 10F1 onto consent.
Yeah, we're noting that them two had revisions to them.
And that the two had revisions, exactly.
Does 10F3 need to be?
10F3? I would love to put that on consent as well. Look at us putting everything on consent. Council Lehman, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's the one I had the modification to it.
No, 10, 10F3. The bike, the bike committee one. Last page.
I got the, uh, Percocet thing going on here.
Well.
Honestly, I don't want the bicycle.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave that off. All right, so entertain a motion for consent agenda as amended this evening. Council Mokel?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Senator Lieutenant, Council Luce. Mr. McNeil, you have everything there?
We'll find out.
All right.
All right.
10B1 adopts resolution number 7492, authorizing participation in the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's 2015 Toward Zero Deaths Enforcement Grant. 10B2 declares five forfeited vehicles. I'm sorry, thank you. That should be 4B2 and 4B1. Uh, declares five forfeited vehicles to be surplus property and authorizes the proper sale and disposal of these vehicles. 4C1, 2, and 3 adopts resolutions declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments and setting public hearings for November 5th for the following projects. Valley View Road Improvements Project Number 2012-7, uh, the 2014 Street Reconstruction Project, which is 2014-1, and Valley Park Business Center Project Number 2013-6. 4C4 was removed from consent agenda. 4C5 and 6 adopts resolution accepting work on two projects. One, the 2013 Upper Valley Drading and Tway Improvement Project Number 2013-7, and the 2014 Batum and its Overlay Project Number 2014-2. 4D1 adopts resolution appreciation for Marvin John Lager and John A. Klein, both for 20 years of service with the Shakopee Fire Department upon their retirement. 4D2 adopts resolution 7494 amending the previous resolution regarding the city's Section 125 Cafeteria Plan for Employee Benefits. 4D4 authorizes the appropriate city official standard into a contract amendment for continuation of OSHA compliance and safety services through the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. 4D4 adopts a res- excuse me, revised job description for the natural resources technician, the parks and rec, and park and public works directors, and further authorizes the reassignment of the natural resources function through the Public Works Department effective October 20, 2014. 4E1 adopts ordinance number 894 amending the savage, excuse me, Shakopee City Code to 10.21 relating to regulations pertaining to dogs and cats. 4F1 approves payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $2,334,452. 4F2 adopts minutes of this September 16, 2014 City Council Meeting. 4F3 adopts ordinance number 893 amending Shakopee City Code relating to the collection, disposal, refuse, and recyclable materials. That was the one that was corrected on the table. 4F4 adopts resolution 7493 approving a premises permit for the Shakopee Eagles to sell pull tabs at American Legion 1266 First Avenue East. 4F5 authorizes the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $19,500 for an IT strategic plan to be developed by LBL Technology Partners. 4F6 authorizes the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $70,290 for a service agreement with the Shakopee, excuse me, with the American Legal Publishing Corporation for the recodification of the Shakopee City Code. 4F7 approves a recommended 10 SAC credits valued at $29,600 to be used by Badger Hill Brewing LLC. 10C3 was added to the agenda and added to consent tonight, and that authorizes a closure of Second Avenue from Atwood to Holmes and the crossings for Atwood Fuller and Holmes Street for a period October 18 through 21st. And 10F1 was added. That was the, to authorize, uh, staff to apply for a right-of-way permit from Scott County for the mural project proposed to be on the support wall of the First Avenue Mini Bypass. Did we miss anything that was to be added?
That was good. Council Lehman?
4F7, take that off, consent. I'd like to vote against that one.
4F7, yes, remove that.
Yep.
Consent, okay. Um, all right, any further discussion on the motion on the consent business? 4F7 was removed from consent. Um, and before we vote on this, I just want to say the mural project, if anybody has, wants to talk about that or is excited about it, as we are. Laura from Main Streets Program is here, and you can find out information about it on the Cities and Main Streets websites. So it's a really great project. October 25th is the, uh, big kickoff party. So, any further discussion? I see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Now we move on to item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. This is a period of time where anybody can speak, um, who would like to for a period up to five minutes. Uh, so I know we've got folks, I think, here that'd like to speak this evening. And if you do, max five minutes. Did you guys, okay. There we go.
Go ahead, just stand right there.
Yep, stand right there. You gotta sign in on that pad down there, name and address for me, please. And also just want to mention that no action will be taken on the items that get brought up tonight, but we'll take everything under advisement.
Uh, hello, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, uh, my name's, uh, Thandal Ballheim, and, uh, I'm an honorably discharged veteran from the United States Army. I've served in this country for nine years. Since I've been home, I've had to call the, uh, Shakopee Police Department on numerous occasions about riling homes. They've sent in, uh, several surveyors and trespass on my property and my dad's property. Now, as a veteran, nothing has been resolved. It's still a problem. I have construction workers throwing pop cans into my yard, and there's been no resolution whatsoever as far as any kind of compensation whatsoever. I just wanted to bring that to all of your attention, and the police reports are on record.
All right, and this is Dakota Highlands?
This is, uh, Hildale Drive.
Yeah, but what development, which one?
Dakota crossings, I think.
Dakota Crossing?
Dakota Crossings, yeah.
The note they're putting in, I assume.
Council Lehman?
Do you, uh, are you positive they're not on a right-of-way on your property and they're actually physically?
I have photographic evidence.
Okay. Very good. And that's with the police department?
Yep. I've shown, uh, Shakopee Police Department the photographs, and they have the police reports on record.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted to bring that to all the councilmembers' attention regarding Hildale Drive.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Uh, good evening, members of the city council. My name is Brandon Crumweed. I'm a resident, um, and homeowner at 2075 Hildale Drive. On September 2nd, 2014, the city approved resolution number 7478, City Project 2014-3, the preliminary engineering report for Hildale Drive improvements. Following the approval of this report, an informational meeting was held on September 17th, 2014, to provide an overview of the project design, description, costs, uh, construction process, and information on estimated assessments. Upon hearing this and its findings, the residents of Hildale Drive strongly object to any effort to move forward on the proposed improvements. First and foremost, the estimated assessment of $28,780 per lot are an economic hardship for several of the residents along Hildale Drive. Adding to this hardship are the additional costs associated with permits, construction and plumbing to municipal sewer, and water from each house, as well as the connection charges. In total, excluding running the lines to the physical connection, um, in the street, each homeowner, homeowner along Hildale Drive would be responsible for paying more than $41,000 per lot. That's not including the connection to and from the houses. In two weeks, on October 21st, a public hearing will be held on City Project 2014-3, to which all homeowners here, Hildale Drive, will be present to voice their concerns. In addition, we are all united and have a written statement and signed petition which we would like to share with you, the city council, tonight, and file with the city clerk in opposing moving Project 2014-3 forward. The reason for this is that we request a further in-depth review and discussion is needed, especially concerning the high costs associated with the project and the financial burden placed on each of the homeowners. Currently, we each have our own well and septic system that we are responsible for. The cost to maintain, operate, and update as needed is less than a quarter to one-third of the costs associated with the proposed improvements. Based on this, it makes no sense at this time for the homeowners in the city to move forward on such an expensive project. I want to thank you for giving me the time and opportunity to present this to you tonight, the members of the city council. Please, I encourage you to read the preliminary engineering report in its entirety, and to take these signatures and our statement of concern into consideration when we meet again October 21st. Thank you. And I do have that here for a copy that, if whoever needs to be brought to.
You have a question real quick? Um, have you talked to staff about this project?
I have.
Okay. So you understand the process, that everything's gonna, because we'll have the public hearing, and it can only be assessed what the benefit is and all that fun stuff that goes along with it?
Exactly. I actually was in Bruce's office yesterday with a couple more questions that I had, so.
Perfect. Thank you very.
Can we get our copies?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Mayor, members of council, I'd also like to point out, we started this process based on a petition that the property owners wanted to have a feasibility report, so that's how the process started.
It started from?
It started from a petition from the homeowners.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Uh, yeah.
Does the, uh, does this, do they have the option of a deferred assessment if they're not hooking up to the services that we're putting in the ground?
This, I think this is all, uh, topic of discussion for?
Okay.
The public hearing. Yeah.
That's what, that's the purpose of it.
Yeah, there are lots of options.
Yep. Okay.
That can be figured out as we go forward. All right, any further, uh, requests to speak? All right, if not, we will move on. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming to chat about this with us. Um, we are gonna move on to, uh, item number six, public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, business removed from consent agenda discussed at this time. So we've got, uh, two that were removed. 4C4, Council Whiting?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh, to approve extension of work hours for, uh, County Road 17 and Veriling Drive. This is a concern to me. It, I understand the safety issues and the ramifications of, uh, constructions and workers working on such a busy highway. I also want to point out that, uh, there is a very large apartment building right there, uh, at Country Village Apartments, and I would like to ask, uh, staff to, uh, work with the construction team to make sure that some of these night operations are not done near that apartment complex. And with that, um, concern noted, I guess I can, uh, move this along.
Okay.
Mr.?
Mr. Looney?
Mayor, members of council, I just want to make sure we all have the full understanding. We're looking at this as an option that if we can need it or not, contractor still thinks he can probably do it in the daytime, but we'd like to have an option sometimes. It may work out better to be it at night. So, 'cause whenever we do the paving, the final paving lift, it is going to be very disruptive to traffic, and so we're looking at that option as a way to minimize traffic disruption, increase worker safety, as well as safety to the general public. So it's not necessary that we will do this, but giving this gives us an option and with conditions as you see fit.
You guys can't leave. Just kidding. Anybody, you can, if anybody doesn't want to stay, that's perfectly fine. You're more than welcome to, to get up and hop out, but it is an exciting meeting. We've got lots of great stuff. Sorry, Bruce.
No, that's okay. But I just want to make sure everybody's under the understanding, it's something we may or not do, we'll have to pinpoint the days, get notices out. It, it is an option for us to really consider, and we won't have another council meeting before, hopefully it gets paved.
Perfect. Mr. Luce?
Mayor?
Oops, sorry. Council Luce?
I think the greater benefit is to get this project moved along. Um, you know, we, I've heard nothing but gripes about how long this project's taking. If they can do it at night, they can do it quicker. Um, if they need to shut down certain sections, they can do that. It's a lot easier at night, less traffic. Um, I say let them have their timeframe.
Okay. Council Lehman?
Totally in support of the proposal. I like the, uh, staff recommended conditions. It's contingent on minimizing noise exposure, and it can be revoked at the discretion of the city engineer for the nighttime work. So I think the conditions are already laid out to minimize the impacts. I completely agree with Councilor Luce that, uh, sooner we get it done, uh, sooner we can utilize it without all the headaches.
Council Whiting?
Full agreement. I just believe that, uh, working with staff, uh, with the construction crew, we can minimize, uh, the construction near that, uh, heavy residential area.
Do you have a motion?
I'll, um, offer motion, uh, uh, for the suspension of the city code 10.60, noise elimination and noise prevention subdivision three, hourly restrictions on certain operations, uh, de- allowing nighttime work for, from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM on, from October 13th to October 31st to minimize traffic impacts and safety as authorized by the city engineer, and direct staff to publish notice of the suspension of terms with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Council Luce?
Seconded.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. 4F7, Council Lehman?
Well, after looking at their, uh, proposed sheet here on the sewer credit request, they're basically asking for 100% of their total usage, and, uh, I just don't agree with it. So.
All right.
Five credits possibly, 10 would be 100%. No, I don't, I don't agree with that 100% of the usage.
All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, more than you grant five SAC credits to Badger Hill Brewing LLC?
Mayor Tabby? Can I say anything or not?
Wait, we'll have to, they get a second.
I'll second that.
Senator, my counselor, Whiting?
I'm sorry, I apologize. I just wanted to point out to you that there are three portions that go into paying the SAC charges. There's a city portion, there is a met council portion, and the third portion gets paid into SPUC. So of the total charges, our portion is, I believe, $475 for the city portion. The met council portion is, I think, $3,000. It's outlined in your memo. And SPUC's portion is $4,500 per credit. So Badger Hill will still need to be paying SPUC approximately $45,000. So basically, we are covering less than half of their, of their SAC charges. I think ours is $29,600.
Council Lehman?
The SPUC charge is actually like a WACC charge, Water Access.
They call it WCC, Water Connection Charge, but it's, it's all based on those same 10 credits.
Yep, and I see the SPUC charge is totally separate from what the city, they have their own separate appointed commission that they could make their case to them for any deviation from their fee structures.
All right, so we have a motion and a second discussion. I'll be voting against this because I think it's, uh, the 10 SAC credits, since we have them as a city, uh, to be utilized for economic development. This is, uh, a very, very good project for the city in the future. Um, I think this is a great use of those, uh, credits. So, any other discussion? Counselor Luce?
I was opposed to it at first, um, with the fact that we do have quite a few SAC credits sitting in inventory from RAR, and the price of those is fluctuating. We don't know what's gonna happen with them. I think we need to use some of them so that we don't, you know, basically lose them.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to use five credits as opposed to the recommended and requested 10 SAC credits. Um, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, does not carry. One of four with Counselor Lehman in, uh, favor and four against. Do we have another motion? Council Whiting?
I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend the 10 SAC credits valued at $29,600 for Badger Hill Brewing LLC.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Senator, my counselor, Mokel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Counselor Lehman in dissent. Uh, item number eight, entertain a motion to recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Anyone? Counsel Whiting?
Make a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator, my counselor, Luce. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Lehman, you're on.
The, uh, secretary, please take the roll.
Yes, Mr. President.
Approval of the agenda would be in order. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, uh, and I will add the consent business along with that.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Whiting for agenda and consent, seconded by Mr. Luce?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. For a public hearing on the consideration of Minnesota Investment Fund application of Data Card Corporation. Turn it over to Samantha.
Do we open a public hearing?
Oh, motion to open a public hearing, my bad. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion to open a public hearing, seconded. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Public hearing. Samantha DiMaggio, City Economic Development Director.
Thank you, President Lehman. Tonight, I am here on behalf of Data Card. They are asking the city to apply on their behalf for a Minnesota Investment Fund loan in the amount of $500,000. They have purchased the building from T. Connectivity. T. is now moved out. Data Card is there, they're in the process of rehabilitating the building. The rehab costs associated with the building and the purchase of any furnitures, fixtures, equipment, stuff like that, is approximately $15.2 million. So they are asking that the state of Minnesota, Minnesota Investment Fund pay $500,000 of that project. The remaining balance will be paid by Data Card. At the time of application, they had 681 jobs in the state of Minnesota. They plan to add 100 new full-time equivalent positions in return of getting the $500,000. That's what they're saying that they'll do. Their average hourly salary is $23.58 per hour cash, and their average hourly benefit is $7.78. They hope to open before the end of the year or around the first of the year. And I do have members from Data Card here, if you have any questions for them specifically or any questions of me. So what I would ask for you tonight is ask that we apply to deed if awarded the grants that we are able to then offer the funds to Data Card and enter into loan agreements with them.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Whiting?
Uh, this deed application or for the grant, was that discussed at the original planning for Data Card?
It was somewhat kicked around in the beginning, but they weren't really sure what their needs were gonna be, so that's why they've had them hold off till now. So their total package, I think their total project cost was around that $26 to $30 million. Mr. Smolinski is here, and I think he would tell you that unfortunately, project costs are running higher than initially anticipated as well, which may have spurred their, their application of the Minnesota Investment Fund.
Mr. Luce?
How many of the jobs that are in the state are actually gonna be in Shakopee?
In the end, all of them will be moved to Shakopee. Yep, the 100, and then I think of the, did you say of the 681? I think 660 of them were here, and there were a few in St. Paul. They're gonna move the St. Paul jobs here to Shakopee. So all the jobs, this will be their world headquarters here in Shakopee.
If I could sum this up, and correct me if I'm wrong, but basically for $834,000, we're getting 100 jobs.
If you, are you adding together the?
Tax abatement and the?
Sure.
Minnesota Investment Fund dollars.
Yep, we sure are. And at the time that we had offered them those funds, I think that they were our lowest investment. I think we were paying $300 a job through the tax abatement. So even if you were adding the Minnesota Investment Fund, I think we're now around $4,500 a job, which is still, you know, deed, we always considered anything less than $24,000 per job a good deal.
Mr. Tabby?
And where does that $500,000 come from?
That comes from the general fund. Those funds were given to the state of Minnesota to use for economic development. They are offering these jobs to Data Card. I think part of the reason is because this is such a good company, they want to keep these jobs here. They do have the ability to add more jobs anywhere in the world. They are a global company. A majority of their business is done elsewhere, so they could add that anywhere.
But that $500,000 is all state funds and not city funds at all?
It is state funds. They will grant them to us. We will then issue a forgivable loan to Data Card. In return, they'll promise to create the 100 jobs. Earlier, I received some information from the company that showed the average salary and what everything was. I think that they had maybe six workers that were around that $14 an hour range. They had 600 and, you know, I think 650 workers, that their average wage was $43 an hour. So this is a very good company, very good jobs. We want them to stay here in Shakopee and to grow their jobs here.
Mr. Luce.
So the only cost to the city is just administering the?
Basically, yeah. Unless, you know, something were to go awry. I have had their financials analyzed by Springstead, so as far as I can tell, everything looks great. They're a good, solid company. They were, they were smiling when they, when they told me everything was a go, so I don't think we have anything to be worried about.
Is it safe to assume the state gets their dollars from the taxpayers?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion would be in order. Uh, motion to close the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Anybody? Motion to close up public hearing, Mr. Whiting.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Ms. Mokel. Ms. Mokel?
Oh, no, we can vote.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, public hearing is closed. Motion would be in order. Ms. Mokel?
I'll make a motion for resolution number 2014-5, a resolution regarding the authorization of approval for a Minnesota Investment Fund application, grant agreement, and forgivable loan in connection with Data Card Corporation or its affiliates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tabkey, motion by Mokel, seconded by Tabkey. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, myself, motion passes four to one. Any other business? Seeing none, motion to adjourn, Mr. Tabkey.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October 21st, 2014, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Luce. Motion by Tabkey, seconded by Luce to adjourn to October 21st, 7:00 PM. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Alright, thank you. We reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting, and thank you very much. We move on to 10C1, 17 Reconstruction Project from Dominion Avenue to 42, presentation. Mr. Looney.
How we introduce today is bring up John Schalkoff from Scott County. And he has PowerPoint presentation?
I do.
Okay, so.
I'll know when you're in.
Come on up. Uh, this is, uh, we've been working on this project, this is the second phase of 17. Four-laning 17 down to the interchange from Dominion Hill all the way down there. The project is fairly far along, and we want to present where we're at to the councils, so get any feedback from you, any comments, so we can finalize plans and move forward to bidding. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John. Thank you, sir. John is the project manager for this project? Appreciate that. Yep. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Schalkoff, as Bruce said. And I am a professional engineer in the Physical Development Department for Scott County. And tonight, I'll be walking you through the reconstruction Phase Two project on County Highway 17. A little looking back to 2012 and looking forward here all the way out to 2022. As you can tell, County Road 17 is a, has been a very busy corridor from a construction perspective. We've had a project in 2012, 2013, which is still under construction right now, and 2014, as you're well aware of, the Bureaucracy Project. And we are talking this evening about the line in red on that diagram. That is the 2015 segment of County Highway 17. Little information about County Road 17, it is a northwest A minor arterial, guided to be a principal arterial in the future, and it serves a connection between 42 and Trunk Highway 169 as well. As it provides an east-west function for traffic running from 42 to County Road 78, as you can see there. The project that we're discussing will actually fill a gap between several projects. First being County Highway 17 and 42 Partial Interchange Project, which was constructed in 2011. And the project currently under construction, County Highway 17 Phase One, as shown there. County Highway 17, the Burling City Project is also, as I had mentioned before, under construction. And this last segment, as you can see, closes the gap. Phase Two, it's approximately 1.1 miles in length, with an average daily traffic of 15,000 vehicles today. Projected to be 28,000 vehicles in 2030. I just inserted this slide for your benefit. It's basically summarizes what I just said. Proposed improvements to this segment of County Road 17, it's currently a two-lane rural roadway. It will be reconstructed as a four-lane urban roadway section with left and right turn lanes, Wood Duck Trail, paved shoulders, trails on both sides of the road, will be reducing access points with the closure of Chateau Avenue, Blue Heron Trail, and driveway accesses near the County Highway 17 and 42 Partial Interchange. Utility improvements will light the intersection at Wood Duck, as well as provide some stormwater infrastructure. I'd like to walk you through the layout of the project, starting on the south end of the project at 17 and 42. This is the aerial photograph of the new Partial Interchange constructed, like I said, in 2011. As you can tell, we'll have trails on both sides of the road. We'll be relocating the driveway shown there. We'll move to the north here and show you the rest of the layout of the project. Over, you can't see my mouse, but if you look on the north edge of the project, that's where we're tying in to the current Phase One project, again, which is under construction. We'll be closing two city streets, Blue Heron Drive and Chateau Avenue. Shown here, we are, we're also closing two other driveway accesses, direct driveway accesses, which are in proximity to the interchange. The one on the west is Mr. Bolt's driveway access, and the one on the east is Mr. Hohenstein's access. We're also extending Hohenstein Court, as shown here, to provide public access to the linked property, which I showed on the previous slide, and Mr. Hohenstein. This is our typical sections for the project. As I mentioned, it is a four-lane divided urban section. Two lanes in each direction, we'll have right turn and left turn lanes at the intersection, a 15-foot boulevard, a 10-foot trail, and four-to-one seeded slopes. I'd also like to highlight, particularly in the top image here, we have provided, in accordance with the corridor study that was presented and approved by the council back in 2009, a place of refuge for vehicles that are taking the, from the, on the west side of 17, pulling out into the intersection and heading, wanting to head north, or even cross to Wood Duck on the east side of 17. We're providing an area here with a wider median to allow a vehicle, a place of refuge, to improve the safety of the intersection. I'm going to talk a little bit about a element of our project that required some coordination and cooperation between the county and the city that we really made an effort on. As you can see, Wood Duck, I thought I would have a, an ability to point here, but can everybody see Wood Duck and Marshall Road, the, the intersection here? Bruce, do you have a?
We have a laser.
A laser for me?
Oh, right there.
Oh, right here.
It's, it's over here, John. No, see the box?
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you. That screen you can see. Okay. This might be a little clearer.
People at home can't see that.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Bruce. Thank you. Apologize. Uh, the Wood Duck intersection is located right here. And for this neighborhood on the west side, it was particularly of interest to us to consider making a potential connection between Valley Creek Second Edition Jennifer Lane, which runs, as you can see, in stubs outright at the south edge of this 40-acre development that occurred last year, and Lakeview Drive. And one of the, uh, studies we included in our, uh, design was examining the feasibility of making such a connection as shown here. Uh, we contacted, the county contacted and actually contracted with Bolton and Mink to put together a layout and study the potential development of these properties. Now, our intent was to provide Wood Duck Trail, northbound traffic, a signalized intersection alternative at 17 and 78. In other words, provide a way for this neighborhood and, and this neighborhood, which currently find their only outlets on 17 at Blue Heron and Wood Duck, a way to traverse to the north, all the way up to 78, take a right, and then enjoy the new signalized intersection and left turn lanes that are being constructed right now to head north. The other reason we pursued this, studying the feasibility of this option was, of course, to remove the four driveways that had direct access off of County Road 17. In order for this to happen, we needed five property owners, all five shown here, to vote in favor of making the connection. Unfortunately, the property owners were unable to reach this consensus. And owners will have right-in, right-out access to County Highway 17 until further development occurs. And Jennifer Lane is not included with this project. Other key design items that I'd like to highlight was the lowering of the Wood Duck Trail intersection to improve profile grade on the west side, particularly of County Highway 17, as well as coordination with Shakopee Public Utilities Commission and their Tank Number Seven project, which is currently under construction as well. Our project schedule today is marked on this bar. I'm hoping to achieve final submittal, or 95% planned submittal, special provisions here by the end of the month, with a right-of-way certification in early April, and finish of construction October, end of October next year. Next steps for us will be an environmental review to complete design, right-of-way acquisition, and a cooperative agreement between the City of Shakopee and Scott County. If you have any questions, here's my name and phone number, and Lisa Freese is also here this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Lehman.
What is the, uh, access to Blue Heron? You're, if you're closing that, what's their alternative to get to 17?
Let me back up a couple slides here. This is Blue Heron Court. This is Wood Duck.
Yep, so we're going to go back to Wood Duck and then over?
Correct.
Okay. And the one property that you're, want to take out is, for what purpose? Is that the one right on the end where the road connects now?
No, sir. No, sir.
I don't understand what you meant.
Well, there's one, one house in here that, apparent, one property apparently you gotta, you gotta acquire on Blue Heron, and I'm wondering what, what that's for.
Sure. Okay. Blue Heron Court, Bolt Access. Let me, um, take you back to this, this slide right here, relocation of driveways. We are removing Mr. Bolt's direct access to County Road 17 and relocating his access through this parcel onto Blue Heron Court.
We can't see which one you're pointing at?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was pointing at the wrong screen there. This, I'm.
Ah, there we go.
I apologize. Again, we're closing Mr. Bolt's current access off County Highway 17, relocating it through this parcel onto Blue Heron Court.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could interject for a second. One of the items we talked about, and it's in your packet, this drawing. And this is Blue Heron Trail, and this is Heron Court. And this is the parcel that the county is looking at purchasing to bring a driveway through. One of the things with the County Road 17 corridor study is to look at how, in, in this area south of here, how can we make road connections, local road connections, because there's very limited access in the future. And, uh, so that's one of the, you can barely see the line here, but one option, this is a decision to be made in the future. It's not being made now, but potentially of extending a road through this lot. That's how you could make that road connection. You would change this cul-de-sac a little bit and provide a connection. If you look at the big picture of this area, it's this area right here, and try to bring, and then bring in a road down from there to there. That's some of the thought process, and that, and again, those are future discussions, future things that need to be looked at. But how do you make those connections? Otherwise, the next neighborhood to the south, if they develop, they have to come all the way down to 29th Avenue, and actually, there's no exit, there's only right in there or right out. They have to come all the way down to Marcy Lane. Just something to keep in the thought process, sir.
Councilman Lehman.
My next question is, the, it seems to meet the spacing for that access from Wood Duck down to where the current access is. It seems to meet the county spacing guidelines, so is it a spacing issue to 42? Since 42?
I'll let John answer that. The spacing guidelines for a principal arterial are quite high.
Right, right. This is guided as a principal arterial. But I'll also point out, the significance of this access is also driven by its proximity to the interchange. Where you see this red line here in the middle represents where this median is moving from a grass median into a concrete median. And the grade separation between, uh, between the northbound and southbound lanes actually begins to occur back in this area. So, there's a number of, uh, concerns that we had, particularly for these three accesses that were on this curve and near the County Highway 17-42 interchange that guided us into the removal of this access. It's very important to us, we're very concerned for the safety of our traffic and traveling public in this area.
Obviously, it'd only be a right-in, right-out if it was open.
Correct.
Other questions?
Could you give a little clarification on which axis he's referring to in that conversation there?
That blue box that he's pointing at right now?
Yes, sir.
Right here.
And that's off the plans of 17?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and coming up, Sean, I have to know.
Sir, hold on to that for a moment. I'll, I'll give you a, I'll give you a shot in a little bit, but you'll have to come to the microphone and.
I just wondered.
Yeah, but nobody else can hear you at home, and there's, there's, so just give me just a minute here. Or you guys can talk about it after, if that would be easier, whatever you want to do. Question I have here is with, uh, with Wood Duck, how concerned are we on the left-hand turns onto 17 from either side of Wood Duck? Because currently with just two lanes, it's a bear making a left-hand turn onto that road?
Sure.
So.
Well, I, I can certainly say that it's, it's certainly not going to be an ideal situation any way you slice it. We are, we ran the analysis on the intersection, and it does not warrant a signal by our given criteria. There are three ways, however, we are improving this intersection. We are improving the sightlines of the intersection, for one. Secondly, as I mentioned before, consistent with the corridor study, we are providing an extra-wide median in that area to allow a place of refuge for the public. So you only need to cross one lane direction at a time. And thirdly, by increasing the number of lanes, for particularly the southbound movement, it, it will be easier to find a gap in traffic. it, it will be easier to find a gap in traffic. You know, if traffic is staying right, heading from that refuge area, taking that left-turn movement should be much easier than it is today, where you have to literally cross two, two lanes of traffic with half the number of lanes, so...
Okay, and then my second question to that is, the Jennifer Lane exchange, extension is a non-item now? We can't, that's done, we can't do that, correct?
Unfortunately, the ship has sailed.
Unfortunate that we weren't able to get that done. Other questions?
We did try.
We did try. Any other questions?
Would a signal at some future point, when traffic analyses show the capacity warrant possibly a stoplight in the future?
Well, we'll certainly continue to monitor the intersection, council member.
All right. Anything else? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Mr. Looney, there's no action that you need from us at all, correct?
No, just, uh, we, we got your comments, and you can see the project is, how it's, how it's being designed and presented and rationale for it, so...
Did you wanna ask your questions? Do you wanna just talk afterwards with them, or what?
Oh, I'll talk afterwards.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thank you. Thanks, man. Um, all right, we're gonna move on to ten C two, County Road Sixteen reconstruction project from Dean Lake Trail to twenty-one.
Another county project here. Andy Hingabel is gonna present. And just a quick, this project is being planned for construction in 2016. But we're getting an early start, so we can get the right-of-way going. There's significant right-of-way needs to be acquired from the Shakopee, Mid-Allaken Sioux community. So I think, Andy, you have a power point as well?
It's on the same track.
Is it on your table? If you wanna get set up there. I think we're at sixty percent plans?
Correct.
Sixty percent of the plans, so we've had two open houses. We've had significant public input. We wanna show you where we're at in the process. Feel free to give us comments for our con.
Thanks, Bruce. Hello, I'm Andy Hingabel with Scott County. I'm a transportation pioneer. I've been working on the County Highway Sixteen reconstruction project. A little background information here to share with you. Section we're looking at is between, basically between County Highway eighty-one and Highway twenty-one. It's about one point seven miles in length, and current volumes, traffic volumes out there are about seventy-six hundred vehicles a day, and it's projected to reach about fifteen thousand by 2030. Sixteen serves as a reliever to Highway one sixty-nine, and it also connects the two parts of town, South Bridge to the Canterbury Road area and onto the, to the rest of the western part of the city. This project has been looked at for a number of years. Started with, maybe even before this, but a corridor study was completed in 2002, and really identified as development occurs in this area. Traffic has continued to increase. There'd be a need for some improvements. And this design follows the, this project or the, the recommendations that were carried out and identified in the corridor study. The opening of Highway twenty-one has certainly changed things, the traffic patterns in the area. And we've really seen a shift in traffic between eighty-three, this portion of sixteen, between eighty-three and twenty-one, and not so much to the east between twenty-one and eighteen. That's pretty much leveled off, and the volumes there, it's more residential area. It's about thirty, three thousand to thirty-five hundred or so trips per day. So it's about half of that. Proposed improvements, an expansion project from the current two-lane rural design to a four-lane urban roadway section. Again, left and right turn lanes at the intersections, paved shoulders. Pretty similar design to what John just proposed for, or showed for the County Road Seventeen project. Different arterial design with this one. It's not as big of a traffic generating roadway as Seventeen is, but again, continuing a lot of that same design that you've seen with the other county roads in the county here or within the city. Eagle Creek Boulevard would be proposed in front of the Dean Lake neighborhood, where there's a lot of direct driveway accesses onto sixteen currently to, to be turned or converted into a frontage road with the main line, County Highway, being shifted to the south. And then doing a full-depth reconstruction of the road that would then become a local street. And, and then also realigning the McKenna Road intersection, again, intersection lighting and some stormwater infrastructure. Just kinda walked through the layout here. Again, a lot of the same things are kinda labeled what I just walked through. But a couple ponds are being proposed to accommodate the new stormwater runoff. The, um, this, this would be the, the current alignment is this yellow line Eagle Creek Boulevard to the north. And as you can see, the, the new highway would be shifted to the south along what is, um, the SMSC's land that has currently been planted as some native prairie out there. And, and then it's red shows some berms that would create some kind of buffer separation between the two roadways. Again, trails on both sides of the road, an eight-foot on the north and a ten-foot on the south. And then it would taper back to, to two lanes east of the Highway twenty-one intersection. This is probably hard to see, but again, the typical section. Having a median in the middle, as John had talked about, does provide some opportunities to create some kind of buffer as, at the intersections to help vehicles get across. And here is a focused in area in front of the Dean Lake neighborhood. Again, there's a number of driveways that directly go onto sixteen at this point, and it's very challenging at this point for some of the residents to get in and out of there. The road itself is very narrow to begin with today. It does make some challenges and some safety concerns that are out there today. By pulling the road away, that will help alleviate a lot of that, giving the residents the opportunity to, to act as more of a traditional local road and, and be able to get in and out of their streets as they can, and pushes the traffic away from them. And the, uh, the section, the cross-section at the bottom there is example of what the berm, berming could look like. There's, this is roughly about three thousand feet in distance of the, what would become kind of the local frontage road. And we, we tried to create some kind of separation by installing a berm where feasible, median like, it's, it's about a four-to-one slope, which allows for some maintenance of the road and still provides some height. And you can see we're able to fit in two berms in the section. And then in the middle, where it gets a little bit more narrow, there's not, not as much right-of-way in that area that would remain open. So the, the larger berm on the west side there is, goes up to about six feet in height. And on the east side, it's about four feet in height. One other thing with this is that, working with the city staff, we, we talked about options for the trail in this area here, and, and it was suggested that it'd be a benefit to the residents to push the trail towards the frontage road, providing better access for the trail, keeping, giving the trail and the trail users away from the, the main line, higher-speed roadway, and, and allow for a little bit more storage of snow removal and things like that in the winter. What we, what was required in order to make that possible is to provide a curb and gutter on, on one side of that local road. So essentially, what would be proposed is to do a full-depth reconstruction of the road and then add a curb and gutter with the storms who are on one side of it. So, excuse me, from the face of it, the, the road with itself should remain about the same as it is today with the addition of a curb on one side, on the side opposite of the residences. So that's mostly what I've kinda walked through on the key design items that we've worked through in the process, working with this, Bruce and his staff, and also with Spock and Sioux community. The, what kind of improvements are needed at, on the local road, the frontage road that would be established with this project? Moving the trail again towards that, the berm design height. The other thing would be McKenna Road, the realignment of that intersection to, to make it more square as opposed to the angle that it currently has, so provide better sightlines. Line that up better with a, an additional connection for that Dean Lake neighborhood to get in and out at the same... So basically tying all the intersections into one at that end there. The size and design of the stormwater ponds was discussed, trying to reduce the size as much as possible, knowing that other projects that had been established on twenty-one and eighty-three provided some capacity already, so trying to minimize creating any additional ponds. And then also knowing the fact that on the east end there, the city does own that, that parcel of land, trying to minimize the impact needed for that stormwater pond, but also considering the fact that there are some proposals for use of that land and what kind of stormwater needs may come out of that. So trying to work through all those things. And finally, working through cross-participation cooperative agreements with the city. There's some, still more discussions that need to be made with that. But Bruce has indicated some things that we should explore more, particularly with the Sioux community owning some land on that area. Large landowner along this corridor, and what kind of participation is required or should be required with them as well. So through the process, again, Bruce mentioned that we're at sixty percent design, trying to complete the, the bulk of the design, have plans pretty much ready by the end of this year, and we should be able to do that. That would give all of next year to work through the right-of-way acquisition piece that's needed. Again, predominantly, the landowner that we'd be working with is the Sioux community. And then again, some portions of that city parcel. That's pretty much it. I, I, we're trying to avoid impacts to any of the other parcels, any of the residential parcels in the area. But there may be a, a couple of small things that we need to look at a little bit more closely on that. But for the most part, we're trying to avoid those. And then go through construction in 2016 and probably be a full construction season project. So next steps, complete the environmental review that's required with this project. Again, complete the design plans, work through the right-of-way acquisition, continue our discussions, and finalize the approach for the cooperative agreement, and start getting the project ready for construction in 2016. And I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Questions? Commissioner Layman.
Andy, you touched on the parkland, city parkland in the proposed ponding site. Does that affect any of our plans or issues that are proposed and not solidified at this time?
Well, Mayor, members of council. It, it hasn't, I mean, we, we have a preliminary concept or tennis facility there. And they will need ponding. So what we've been working with the county and their engineers, okay, can we expand this pond to fulfill our needs? And that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna look at. They'll have to work, they'll have to do some ponding and, again, get rid of their drainage. So this project will actually help facilitate that need. So I don't see that being, I mean, we're, at some point, we'd like to know exactly what they may want and see or do, what would their calculations be. I mean, we can see how much land else is needed. But where we structured the pond right now, it's half, kinda half on the Sioux community property and half on the city. It was a big deal with the community that we share that burden. So that's how we structured it. So it looks like, I think, we can expand that pond to fulfill those other needs, and that's where we'll be working with next, with the tennis association. I don't know where they are in their process. I don't think they have any more than a concept right now.
One follow-up, if I may. Is there any anticipated right-of-way acquisition issues that you foresee? Have you been working with the tribe out there to get this done already?
Sure. Mayor and council members, yes, we have been working with Sioux community. And at, at this point, we've been working through what's the best design? What's the footprint going to be? And I think we're at that point now, so now it's to kinda start moving, filing the papers and kinda doing the official stuff to get, to get that all done. But at this point, I guess we don't anticipate any big concerns.
Okay.
At this point, they're, they're on board, as, as far as I'm, my understanding of it.
Commissioner Layman.
Mayor, my biggest concern is the cost participation portion of it. I do believe there's benefit to the, to the south. And once the footprint and the designs are put together, I mean, there's gonna have to be some serious discussions on who's benefiting and to what extent. I, I don't believe there's no benefit to the south. So we're gonna have to have a chat about that, get that worked up before, uh, before I'm gonna agree to move on with it. But that's a pretty big price tag, just for the city to, to shoulder when there's plenty of benefit to go around.
Sir, Mayor and council members, I didn't provide a cost or currently our costs, so we're looking about for this project. Again, it's about one point seven miles. With an additional reconstruction of the frontage road, our estimate right now is about nine million for the total project there for construction. So yeah, it's a pretty big project, and we're trying to work through the traditional cost participation with this, but knowing, understanding that this is kind of a unique project here with the, the land ownership involved. So we'll have to look back at the other projects that the Sioux community has participated in, get a better understanding on that, and try to figure out what the best approach moving forward is, and we'll continue to work with Bruce on that.
Further questions? I have a question between twenty-one and eighteen, specifically between like where the, the washout occurred and eighteen on that end. If I recall from last time, the pavement wasn't in the greatest shape going that direction? How is, if that's not included in this project? Because I know that was looked at as part of this project originally, and that's not included in this what's the future for that section for where this ends to the east to eighteen?
Sure.
Could you pull that up, just so everybody knows what I'm talking about by any chance? It's my first one, sorry. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, oh, let me see.
Good.
Okay, so the, the segment you're talking about is basically to the east of twenty-one. We did, when we first started this project, we did look at, again, trying to get a better idea with the traffic changing on twenty-one, what is the impact or what's changed on this segment here on, to the east of twenty-one? And then we looked at what's the best design or what's the typical design that we could look at for improvements on there long-term? And the, what kinda came out of that is that there really wasn't anything driving the need for change. What the develop, it's been kind of a piecemeal development in that area as you've seen all the new residential developments popping up. When that happens, they've been doing turn lanes and kind of repairing each section at a time. So it definitely has a piecemeal approach to it. However, it, it seems to handle and it will handle the traffic that gets generated in that area fairly well. So there, you know, pavement is kinda scattered, like you said, but there really aren't any other conditions or factors that are driving any change for need at this point. So we, we do not have anything identified. At least the county does not have anything programmed in the next ten years for this segment. There, again, there are some other developments that are popping up and, and, you know, we've heard about earlier that we'll be putting another turn lane in and some new intersection in at that spot. Maybe at some point, we need to look at an overlay or some kind of pavement conditioning as well.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Looney.
Mayor, members of council, I don't know, Andy, if you mentioned it, but Shakopee Public Utilities is gonna put a major water trunk line with the sixteen project.
I did not mention that.
Okay. But that's, that'll be a big item for the water utility.
Perfect. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you for your time.
We appreciate you being here and helping us out with this project. All right, we're gonna move on to ten C four, Verling Drive temporary connection from sixty-nine to Taylor Street. Mr. Looney.
Mayor, how do we get the air conditioning turned off?
We can get to a blanket. It's kinda tough to do right now.
Sure. Kinda foolish, you have the air conditioner on. Pass out the Afghans.
He's dressed for it.
Yes.
Okay, um, Mayor, members of council? This item here is, just came up recently on the completion of the interchange at County Route sixty-nine and one sixty-nine. And, uh, I think I have, find the mouse here. We, we presented this a long time ago in 2013 about the project, and one of the items was to provide a temporary road connection of Verling Drive as a detour road. We actually closed the, the whole County Road sixty-nine in order to build the interchange. And in the plans, that was what it was supposed to be, a temporary road. And that said they would participate as long as it's a temporary road. It's also scheduled, I think it was scheduled probably for today to come out. We delayed that for consideration. Do we wanna keep that road in place or have it be removed? that for consideration, do we wanna keep that road in place or have it be removed? We've been in negotiations, as you well know, for acquiring parcels 37 and 43. It's getting bogged down a little bit in the legal department, no offense, Jim, but the legal people are holding it up. I'm being that.
Hollywood about.
Anyway, it's coming. I talked to the department, we're gonna get an offer letter here in November. And the, with that, we were working towards whether to keep the road in place or not. We were gonna make some provisions for that, but that hasn't happened. So the requirement is that the road's supposed to come out. Working with Craig Jensen of Scott County, and he had told me that the cost of the temporary road was about $67,000. MINDOT initially has said that that would be our cost if it stays in place, and the cost of removing the temporary road is $12,000. I wanna show everybody what we're talking about. This is County Road 69. This is north going this way. Veerling Drive connection is right here. Veerling's built to here and to here, so this would be the temporary road that would be removed, or scheduled to be removed. So with that, I know the mayor's had some conversation with MINDOT's South Area Manager. I let you speak to that, is where we're at with that. I have not had any conversation with him. So he is, we may be able to keep the road in place without having to make the payment, and we would just have to maintain it. I would also be looking at trying to acquire some additional local road improvement funds. There's a program out there, I think we qualify for that, so maybe we can get permanent Veerling Drive improvement funds for next year. We don't have them yet, but a good chance, but we'll see how that goes. But anyway, that's kind of the latest and greatest on the land acquisition, but the issue before you is a temporary road connection. Do you want to keep it in place or let it be removed as scheduled?
So just to clarify, if we keep it in place, our costs are, they're between $1,000 and $3,000 for
Well, yeah, we have to pay for
Remobilization.
Well, no.
Or not.
If we, if we're allowed to keep it in place, the real question is, do we have to pay MINDOT back their local share of constructing it?
So it's, MINDOT, the road costs $67,000 to put the road, the temporary road in, and they had originally told us that we, if, to leave that road in there, that we would need to pay the $67,000, and this all happened, this shouldn't have been an issue, except for the fact that us purchasing the property has been delayed, unfortunately, and so if this had all been done, if we'd purchased the property, been able to purchase the property before the construction was done, this problem wouldn't have been a problem, but since it is delayed, it became a problem, and so we've got 67 grand that MINDOT put into that property, which anytime MINDOT does improvements, they charge that back to the local unit if the local unit, us in this chance, were taking it over. What I argued with MINDOT about was that it served its use, that they needed it for, and there's no further charge for that, and they agreed, but they need time in order to get that all done, and need to get through all the proper channels in order to get that done. So the road is supposed to come out today with the county, and the county graciously agreed to hold off on doing that for us, and so I really think the road should stay there, and then once we acquire the property, we'll take it out whenever development happens to put a real road, a new road in there at that time in the future. And so I think especially for the folks who live on the west side of town, if we, it would be awful to have a new intersection, interchange, that opened up partially today at 69, 169, and not be able to use that veerling road through there and have to go all the way through the mall or around the mall to get there. I would be really angry if I lived over there and had to do that. So our potential liabilities on this are, if MINDOT decides that they want us to pay for the road, that would be either $67,000, or we can tear it out on our own at that point, or somewhere in that line.
I, we'd have to work with the county on their contract, see how we can do that.
Somewhere in there, so. Councilman Whiting.
At one point in time, my life in Shakopee, I lived on 12th Avenue and had to make that trip around the mall, it was a convenient spot over the little speed bumps and things. There is a couple of questions I have. Through the winter and the plowing process, being that this is a temporary road, how is that road gonna hold up through a couple, through, let's say, this winter, one winter?
Well, we had a winter last year. It was a pretty good winter. So we did manage it. It's actually a pretty well-built temporary road, because it was built to handle haul routes, so it is built to handle truck traffic. It's pretty stout.
Just to comment on that, I, you know, I'm not willing to pay the $67,000 for a road that isn't gonna be what we want in the end, so, but if we can delay it, I'd be okay with it.
Councilman Lehman.
This is where government makes no sense at all. So if we don't, they're willing to spend the money to come out and tear it out, but they're not willing to take the same amount and forgive that amount toward what we owe on it if we wanna keep it, which is basically what it boils down to. So, and in the process, we were doing them a favor through a major construction process of giving them an area to bypass or an alternative route. Shame on us for helping them in their process. If, if we're gonna rebuild this road in the future, we would tear this out to be, anyway.
Correct.
So unless we work out some kind of a deal where we can let it stay there temporarily, not reimburse them the 67, and we'll upgrade it later when development comes, I would be willing to do that, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to have some written agreement to do that. Otherwise, I say go ahead and take it, pick it back out.
Councilman Lewis.
Totally agree. If they wanna give it to us and leave it there, you said they might be able to do that.
MINDOT was actually great. I mean, it was, in speaking with John Solberg from MINDOT, they, he was, when this kind of blew up last week a little bit, he was out of town, and so Monday, he called me and we talked about it, and he agrees with you entirely, Matt, that it should not be our, we shouldn't be responsible. I mean, if it were a permanent road that they'd put in, absolutely, we'd have to be, we should shoulder some part of that responsibility, but it's not. It served its purpose, and so he was going to work on that, hopefully he can get that done, and if he can't, I agree that it, we're not gonna pay 70, a little below 70 grand to have a temporary road for a year, and we should just put our own in as fast as we can, but I, I agree, so.
In exchange for them giving us a temporary road that may or may not last very long, we accept any maintenance costs associated with it at that point.
So is, do you need direction from us, or what do you need, Bruce?
Well, it'd be nice to have a motion.
In, to, to what, though?
I would say your motion would be, we're, we'd want the road to remain in place if there is no additional cost to the city, to MINDOT. If there is additional cost to MINDOT, we want the road removed.
Okay.
I know there are a couple of variables on this, so when we say no additional cost, we know we've got some mobilization fees now.
Well, if there, if we have removal, there would be remove cost to the city, about 1,000 to 3,000, I guess that's the estimate, and, but the removal cost is paid for, so that would be only additional cost. If you wanna put some numbers on it, I'm just saying if there's a, maybe if you wanna put the 67,000, I don't know what number you wanna put on there, additional costs for the initial construction, I guess, if we have to pay for that, remove the road.
This is becoming the longest motion known to man.
Make it, however you wanna define it. If you want extra cost or not.
Make a motion directing city staff to negotiate with MINDOT on keeping the temporary road. We'd like to thank them for the opportunity to help them with an alternative route through their construction process, and we look forward to possibly helping them in the future.
Was that last part really in the motion?
No.
Okay. Councilman Lewis.
I would like to second that with the fact that, how much fuel did they save by shortening their route by using our?
Is that gonna be in the motion?
No, that's not gonna be in the motion.
So could you restate the motion that's on the floor, Councilman Lehman?
Motion is to direct staff to negotiate with MINDOT to keep the temporary, temporary road that was used as an alternative route for their construction at no additional cost to the city.
All right, Councilman Lewis, you comfortable with that? Correct. Councilman Mokel.
No, I was just gonna second.
All right.
I forgot.
Councilman Whiting.
Question, does Scott County need to be mentioned in this too? Are they part of this?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, 'cause they were on requested action.
Bruce, the $12,000 to remove, is that acceptable? Is that gonna happen? Is that something that we would have to pick up if this stays in place and they don't charge the city?
Yes. I mean, eventually, if it stays in place, whenever we do the permanent road improvements, we have that removal cost, that'll be ours.
The question was the $12,000 removal cost of it, so if that had to be pulled out on its own, it's $12,000 around there in the future, but as it's, if it's with a future project, it won't be that much, and we'll just take care of it at that point.
We at a future date would, would absorb the cost to ourselves to remove the temporary road to put our permanent road there.
So to clarify, the focus is the $67,000?
Correct.
Yes. All right, discussion, any further? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, 10F1 went to consent, 10F2, adopt ordinance number 895, ordinance of the City of Shakopee amending Shakopee City Code relating to massage therapy businesses. Councilman Mokel has conflict of interest on this item and will be removing herself from the dais. Thank you. We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the reason that Councilman Mokel has to disqualify herself is the reason that this wasn't on consented, and basically what is requested is a change in the city ordinance regarding massage therapists, so that that would allow therapists to do off-premises massages at places of business. What I understand, this is going to be focusing on things like chair massages at wellness fairs, things such as that. We would have to modify the city code so that that could happen. There's a variation on this, that the, there'd be a separate company that would be formed and would contract for the employees, however, the company, the benefiting company, the work fair place, would pay another massage company to do that. So this is something that would be applicable to Shakopee if the employees, if the massage therapists were going to go to a different community, they would have to comply with that city's licensing requirements.
You have a motion?
Question.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right.
Two of them, actually. So, just so I'm really clear here, if I wanted to contract somebody to come to my business and do dentless dent repair, I can do that, but if I wanted to call a massage therapist to come straighten out my back, I can't do that currently?
Massage therapists are licensed dent removal folks or not?
Okay. Wow. Okay, and then the second question is, does the person that somebody would contract with to straighten their back out have to be licensed?
Yes.
Okay. Seems like we put more of an onus on this than we do anything else, but it's just me.
Well, we put this into place, as you, I'm sure, very well recall, a year or two ago, for specific reasons that were going on within the city, that don't generally come up when we're talking about debt reduction and dentless repair. So these are two totally different things that you're trying to mix here.
Well, I just don't
And I get where you're going with it, but it doesn't make any sense.
I just don't see why we stop legitimate businesses from being able to contract with legitimate businesses, so I'm not against this at all.
Okay. Councilman Whiting.
Offer ordinance number 895, fourth series, an ordinance of the City of Shakopee amending Shakopee City Code Section 6.45, subdivision 6, paragraph A, relating to massage therapy businesses.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Second by Councilman Lewis, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero with, what do I say about that, Mark? Do I say that? Is it an extension?
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, is it really a one? Oh? Okay.
Extension, all right.
All right, four, zero, one. All right, item number three, creation of bicycle advisory committee. Mr. McNeil?
Council's been advised that we are in the process of putting together an application to become a bicycle-friendly community as designated by the League of American Bicyclists. This is a fairly comprehensive application, and our intern Zach Stock has done a good job of doing that. We're looking to make application in February of 2015. One of the things that will assist us in identifying what those needs are for cycling, both in terms of commuting and recreation, would be the formation of a local citizens' advisory committee. We would anticipate that this would be something that would meet perhaps as often as monthly, but as needed, I think would be the appropriate thing to describe it as. We're looking for five to seven members, depending on the amount of interest that we get, that would be determined, I think, at that time. The selection would be as you would normally do it for any advisory committee, you'd have interviews performed by the advisory, or excuse me, by the interview panel, and then a recommendation to the city council to appoint. The difference on this one, if you do choose to do this, is that rather than it being advisory directly to you, we would recommend that this be advisory to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We think there are a lot of similarities in their two mission statements, and we think rather than have both of them consider oftentimes a lot of the same thing, the bicycle advisory committee would do the investigation, make the recommendation, then the PRAB would make that recommendation to you. Staffing would be by one of our planners, we have another planner who is also an avid cyclist, and together, we think that those would be able to do the support for this particular group. Are there questions or comments?
Councilman Mokel.
Is the police department gonna be involved at any point with education?
Yes. In your memo, there are five E's that are involved with becoming bicycle-friendly. Education and enforcement are two of those, and we would certainly involve the police department. We've had city staff, the county, and the local bicycle retail shop involved with some preliminary negotiations. This would carry that a bit further and would allow for local input from, hopefully cyclists, to give us advice and feedback on things that would be necessary to help move cycling along in Shakopee.
Other questions? Councilman Lehman.
Seems to me that we don't have a citizen group put together for transportational issues, cars and roads and stuff. We don't have a citizen group put together for restrictive code ordinance type things, can't wash your car in your yard, things like that.
You can wash your car in your yard?
Well, by the code, you can't, they just don't enforce it, unless
Untrue.
Well, that's what's
Next voice.
Anyway, we don't do these things, but we're looking at doing this and putting this way above all these other things that, to me, are much more important and have bigger impacts on more people. So this is not a priority to me. I mean, biking is a good thing, but I think there's other ways to do the same thing, and I think we could do that with a person from police, a person from engineering, to put it into a project that we know we're gonna be doing in the future, like we've already done on, with the county, with the trail coming down 69, down homes and stuff across the first avenue. So I think there's other ways to do this without bogging down staff time and achieving the same thing without placing it up higher than other things that I feel are more important.
Councilman Whiting.
In some respects, I agree with some of those points about having other things that are important, but this is also, you know, as you mentioned, the county bike trail coming down, we have our Main Street program going on, we have a lot of enthusiasm with focused around biking, and we, with the River South program going on, marketing the whole area and adding the aspect of having a bike-friendly community, I think there's a lot of positives that could go along with this. So with that, I'll offer a resolution 7498, establishing the Shakopee Bicycle Advisory Committee to be an advisory to the Park and Rec Advisory Committee.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Same with Councilman Mokel. Councilman Lewis, did you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, I think, you know, we spent a lot of money in the last year on extending trails and doing things that benefit biking. I'd like to get a little more input from the public, and I'm not saying we're putting this above them, but there is a big bicycling community, and we need to get some input from them. I would definitely like to look into Councilman Lehman's ideas on another commission in the very near future. Lehman's ideas on another commission in the very near future, so.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Counselor Lehman in dissent.
Thank you.
We're going to skip quick to other business, item number twelve, see if there's anything from council members. I'd like, Counselor Whiting, can you give us a quick update on SPUC billing stuff from last night in other business here?
Absolutely. As many of you know, there was some social media, call it backlash, uproar, conversation regarding the recent billing period. It was billed in September, but it was for the billing period at the end of July through August. There was a longer billing period, and there was, some folks had significantly higher bills, I noticed that. Those concerns were addressed last night, along with other concerns in regards to customer service issues that people had complained about, and a whole host of other ideas with the way things are billed, the fees for reconnection fees. The idea is, if you have any concerns with your SPUC bill, you need to contact SPUC. Just to reiterate, the City of Shakopee is not SPUC. They are a separate organization, but we're trying to get to the bottom of any concerns that you have. But please contact Julie Ambach at SPUC if you have any questions. They'd be glad to work through that. There's also many opportunities to get on a budget plan, other ways of paying your bill as, through credit cards and automatic bill pay. So, I want to make sure everybody knows that we're looking into this seriously and to reassure people that there is no indication that there is anything wrong with the billing process.
Counselor Lewis?
I've heard quite a few negative comments on what Counselor Whiting's saying, and a number of people have mentioned that they think the city should take SPUC back under the umbrella of the city. And I think if things don't turn around pretty soon, I would be in full agreement with that.
Okay. Anything else? Counselor Lehman?
That, that was, they were created under referendum by the ratepayers, so that would have to be a ratepayer decision, not our decision. On other business, I've got one that I'd like to discuss a little bit, maybe see if we can direct staff for some more information. The Dakota street parking issue between Fourth and, well, there's no other streets up there, Seventh, I guess, six and a half, by Clifton. Apparently, they, their parking lot now is a parking by permit only, and there's a fee to park there. So, everybody's parking on Dakota on both sides, and it's kind of making a mess out of that neighborhood. So, I guess I'd like to see if we can have direct staff, maybe our multi-crime housing person and maybe engineering, have a talk with whoever's managing that facility to get a feel of exactly what's going on. There's a rumor that I heard that it's a paid fee, so I don't know that. We'd have to ask them and find out what's going on. But they've got a parking lot. It's not being utilized to its full potential, and it's placing a burden on the surrounding neighborhood. So, we need to take a look at that and see what we can come up with.
Counselor Lewis?
I have something to add to that. The concerned citizen that Ms. Counselor Lehman spoke with had me come down on a Sunday, and we drove through Clifton's parking lot, and I counted in excess of forty empty stalls. This was approximately between eight and nine o'clock. Went out on the street, and we counted in excess of thirty vehicles on the street. So, there's a parking issue there that's pretty big, and somebody needs to address it.
Counselor Whiting?
I witnessed it myself and had conversations with the same person, and it is parking on both sides of the street, and it's tough to get around. People are making U-turns in the middle of the street.
Looking to it?
Can we contact, any emotion or is this direction good?
I think it's good.
Just to follow up on the SPUC issue, I know we have a SPUC commissioner in the audience, if you are, be willing to have them address any of that, too.
Would you like to address the issues from, if you'd like to, good commissioner?
Sure, counsel. My name is Jordan Olson. I live at two four nine Mound Street.
Thank you.
I'm also a Shakopee Public Utilities Commissioner. Yes, I actually, like counsel, Mr. Lewis, I heard a lot of people come up to me, "Hey, Jordan, what's going on? What's going on? Why is my bill higher?" Without someone's bill in front of me, it's very difficult for me to actually answer their question. So, what I'm imploring, what I put out a little message online to anyone who wants to contact me, my number's nine five two nine one three nine eight three two, and anyone who wants to contact me about their bill, I'm more than willing to take the time to talk to them. Now, I only had, up to this point, one bill, okay, it was a business, and to be respectful, to be respectful, and I'm pretty sure there's a law that says I can't talk about specific bills, I need to look at a bill. And what I did, I had one bill today that was presented to me, and now I took, I spoke with the manager of the utilities company for almost an hour today, and I had him walk me through every step of this bill. Now, the concern, basically, what myself and who, the recipient of the bill, we were both looking at the wrong number on the bill. So, basically, what it came down to, I'm a SPUC commissioner now, yes, but I had to be walked through by the manager on every specific item. Sometimes, when you look at a piece of paper, it's really, it's really hard to differentiate certain things. For example, just the way this bill was written, and you know what, I promise to actually address this in the future, and how it was actually printed. People are confused, or I was confused, about, in this case, what is called a, there's three different types of meters people have. There's a, there's an electric meter, a water meter, and a demand meter. Demand readers, meters, excuse me, are only for commercial industrial users, and that measures basically the peak usage in a certain month. The peak usage, and that there is a certain fee associated with that. And that's not just to SPUC, that's with all sorts of utilities. And the reason I understand that is, is that, let's say that every single house in Shakopee and every single business in Shakopee was to turn on everything all at once. That would blow up our power system. It cannot handle that. So, it's called a demand thing. When, basically, it's hard to break it down between individual companies. There's always something different, you know, that you could have a factory, you could have a small business that has, you know, some TVs or whatnot. When you turn everything on all at once, that creates a spike. So, commercial industrial users have this meter, a demand meter, and that measures the spike. Now, the spike has a fee associated with that. And I think what this, I only, like I said, only had one bill actually presented to me, and it happened to be from a business. So, therefore, the demand meter, it appeared as if their spike on, they had a spike that was lower, but their bill was higher, and then the spike was higher, but their bill was lower. And I had to actually break it down and realize that they actually use more electricity in the month that the spike was lower, and less electricity in the month that the spike was higher. So, it's really just a common misconception, I think. Now, I need to break it down on an individual basis. So, like I said, you know, I'm more than willing to address anyone in this community who's willing to come forth to me. I can't speak on behalf of anyone except for myself, Jordan Olson. And that's all, that's what I have to say to that. That's my job as a commissioner, and that's what I intend to do. So, like I said, that's nine five two nine one three nine eight three two, two four nine Mound Street. Is there any other questions that I may answer?
Counselor Lewis?
I'd just like to say thank you for giving me the ability to give confidence to you, putting you in that job.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Counselor Lehman?
It sounds to me, after hearing you explain some of this peak demand charging thing, and I know the city's got a portion on that bill, too, the sewer, and sewer bill is on there, too, reconstruction fees and these types of things. It sounds like we need to do a better job, us and SPUC, because we're both on the bill, to relay to the consumer what these charges are actually and how they're calculated, because most of us look at them and we have no clue.
Right.
Undergrounding charge, ten cents. The heck is that for? You know, sewer charge, sewer tax, stormwater runoff, blah, 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 blah. You know, it's usually half the bill in some cases, if you're a low user. So, I don't think we do a very good job having the information available to the consumer on what each one of these pieces are, because there's a lot of pieces in one package here. One envelope has a lot of different pieces for a lot of different information, and we could do a better job at that, I think.
Counselor Whiting?
And I know SPUC realizes that, and some of their interpretations are for the industrial bill and industrial users, and they realize that, you know, pointing some of these out to the residential users is not available on their website, and they are looking at that. They have put customer service as one of their high priorities. It's going to be an agenda item near into the future. They'll be working diligently, because they represent us as Shakopee. They are Shakopee. The board are all Shakopee residents and ratepayers, so they are concerned, and they are looking into it diligently.
Mayor, I wasn't picking on just SPUC. I'm kind of picking on ourselves, too, because we have a portion on that bill, our stormwater runoff and our sewer charges, that just by looking at it on the bill, you have no idea what it's for, you know. Our sewer charges are for the amount of water that you use that goes down the drain and gets treated at the sewage treatment center. Our capital cost or infrastructure cost for the sewer fund in the, on the bill, it goes into the sewer fund for future sewer projects and so on and so forth. And we don't have a mechanism to explain that to anybody that doesn't sit here on a regular basis to watch us go through this all the time.
Right. Mr. Mayor and Mr. Lehman, you know, I'd like to say a couple of things, especially to that right there. SPUC, yeah, we, you know, like I said, I can't speak on behalf of the entire commission. I'm only here upon my own accord tonight, and there are other commissioners might or may not feel the same way I do. The point is that it's my job to be here to do the best I can. So, basically, what I wanted to stress is that the only bill that was presented to me was a commercial bill. If there's a resident in this community that has a problem, they need to come to me with their bill, or somebody on the SPUC commission, because I don't know how to present that information or how to interpret that information if I don't actually literally have that information. I can't, I cannot go upon hearsay from the internet. I need the actual facts, and I believe that that is my job. And I also want to stress that, too, when it comes to communicating to the people, SPUC, since its conception, as I understand it, has been a semi, it's removed from the city. You appoint and dismiss commissioners, but also, it's separate in a respect. So, the city also needs to communicate that to the people, and SPUC needs to do it, too. And I think that we should probably go hand in hand with that. And all I can do is make suggestions, and hopefully, both of our boards can actually come to a consensus on that so that there's not a confusion with ratepayers and, you know, taxpayers, they are ratepayers, they're all Shakopee. It's all Shakopee. We're all one.
Yep.
All one. We're at large, as you all know. So, we are all one. And that's what I have to say about that. If there's, I mean, that's why I'm here. That's why you appointed me, right? So, you know, if there's anyone in the audience, anyone at home, I've given you all the information I can to contact me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business? I think that's the longest other business on record. All right. We need motion to go into closed session. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to?
Minnesota Statute, section thirteen D, point oh five, subdivision three, to discuss attorney-client matters relating to the pending eminent domain case between the city and Conklin Industries.
Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Mokel.
Can I make an amendment? Should we take a short break before we convene?
Second.
A third? All right. We cannot do that. We need to act upon the motion that's there. We can't have a motion within a motion.
Or you can draw your motion. We can take a recess, come back and make that motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I'll withdraw.
Okay. Counselor Mokel?
I'd like to make a motion and take a short, seven-minute break.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do that. We'll have to keep the TV guy on until then.
Counselor Lehman, do we have a, we have a second? Motion, second, discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in recess for seven minutes.